This meeting of the Winthrop Town Council will come to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Floor is open for any public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? If none, we're going to have a little bit of a change in agenda. We're moving item 98 to the top of the agenda, which is the transient seller license for Ma's Kitchen Treats.
Thank you for accommodating. I appreciate that. Sure. My name is Vanessa Chase. I own and the proprietor of Ma's Kitchen Treats. I've been selling my baked goods and canned goods in the town of Winthrop right down on Union Street in front of Sully's Tavern for the past year. I had a good year. I had a good year and still people asking, when are you going to be there? You know, they really enjoy seeing my baked goods and my canned preserves and they throw suggestions at me. It's like, have you ever tried such and such? And so it's like, I try it and then they're like, oh, I see you took my suggestion and they enjoy it. So I am looking to renew my seller certificate, excuse me, for another year.
Do we have a motion or any questions?
A second.
All in favor? Very good luck to you.
Thank you.
Like to open a public hearing on the comprehensive plan, the first reading at 6:05 PM.
Bruce, would you like me to give just a few introductory remarks?
Please.
So, I mean, golly, this plan has been more than a year in the making. I see we have maybe all of the members of the Conference of Plan Committee here this evening. Of course, they were instrumental in the plan, as was the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments and Steve McDermott, who is here as well, really helped out with the housing chapter and the future land use chapter. So in keeping with state law, we have had this plan posted for more than 30 days prior to your consideration so that the public has adequate notice. We publicized that on our website and on our Facebook page. We also had printed copies available, not only here at the town office, but at the library as well. So we had three copies over there, one that stayed at the library and two that were for checking out. And our library director told me this evening, or this morning, that the ones that were available to check out have been gone consistently and they haven't just been with one person. So they've been checked back in and then checked back out several times, which I thought was fantastic. So hopefully, we're going to get this plan approved tonight and that will set us up for state consideration of the plan. So the plan does not become official until the state approves the plan. But it also will provide us the impetus to do some other things. Most notably, we've got some other land use matters that are contingent upon the approval of this plan. Some of those are revisions to the zoning ordinance. We also desperately want to update the downtown revitalization plan, which was crafted in the year 2000. And comprehensive plans also proceed open space plans. I know that there's an interest, particularly by the Conservation Commission, to have an open space plan. So and then also, we want to, once we have the plan adopted, we'll want to establish a standing committee to ensure that what is actually recommended in the plan is that there's movement on those things and that both elected officials, like the council, and appointed officials, like town staff, are held accountable to ensure that the recommendations are, that we're making progress in those and moving towards those. So with that, I mean, we're happy to take any comments or answer any questions that the public may have.
Vote to I am Susan Gross and I just want to say thank you to you, but also really to the committee. This is one of the copies that is available at the library. I had aspirations to read it. It's a lot. So kudos for you. What I read is really impressive and I am just delighted to hear that there is a plan for an annual check-in and a committee to be checking progress and looking at things that perhaps don't work as well, so modifications can be made. But thank you to everybody involved. And I encourage any of you to have a look and the easiest thing to do, just so you know, is to, if you really want to see, go to the back section where they said the recommendations and how they're going to do it and so on and so forth. The narrative is great, but there is a huge amount of it. So there you go.
Thank you.
So I'd love to give credit where credit is due. And so it was actually Mrs. Gross's idea to have the copies available at the library and I thought was a terrific idea. And so as soon as she proposed it, we printed up a couple of copies and got them over to the library. So thank you, Mrs. Gross, for that wonderful suggestion.
Any other public comments? I'm looking for a motion. Oh, closed public comments at 6:10. We have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024 comprehensive plan as presented.
All in favor? Motion carries.
And I should have mentioned as well, so like an ordinance, this requires two readings. So we're also asking you to consider waiving the second reading.
All in favor? Motion to waive the second hearing carries. Thank you for the comprehensive plan and the board for coming and doing all the hard work. Appreciate it. Item number 99, consideration of the labor agreement between the town of Winthrop and the International Association of Firefighters Local 5176 EMS unit with a term of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027.
So we have lots of representatives from our ambulance service here this evening in court, including the union president, Steve Booth. And we have Chief Davinsky and Chief Bostel here with us as well to answer any questions that you may have. But as outlined in the background memo here, just are a few of the high points of the agreement and not not a heck of a whole lot changed. I mean, we had a good agreement coming into this and it was just a matter of updating it to these extents. So on July 1st, 2025, so not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, we will move to a Plan 3C under the main public employees retirement system. So this is a plan that is specific to first responders that allows them to retire after 25 years of service and collect 2/3 of the average of their highest three years of compensation. The contract does include wage increases of $2 per hour in each of the contracts, three years. And that is in keeping with what the market for paramedics and EMTs is these days. Our full-time employees will be averaging 42 hours per pay period. So that's 48 hours one week and 36 hours the other week. Currently, it's 36 hours average. And so we wanted to make sure we got them up to at least full time and 42 hours is sort of an industry standard at this point. As we've talked about before, increasing vacation. So this is the first union contract where we're able to do that. Vacation would accrue at a rate equal to three weeks annually through the first five years of employment. And then it would increase within years six to 15 and then beyond year 16. The payout for unused sick leave would be reduced to 0% through the first five years, 25% from years five to 15 and 50% beyond that. And again, we've talked about that before. And so this is the first union contract that we've had an opportunity to address that particular issue. Full-time employees will get a $400 a year annual allowance in which to purchase pants and boots and per diem would get a similar stipend of $150 per year. And then lastly, I've sent you folks some information previously about Maine's new paid family medical leave law. And so this contract includes re-opener language and that's because the state has passed a law, which will go into effect in January of 2026, but they haven't yet adopted all the rules surrounding that. So once the rules are adopted by the state, we need to engage in further discussions with the union just about what the impact of that new law would be because it does require either employees and/or the employer to contribute towards a state fund that would fund that law. So we are obviously recommending approval back last, I believe it was Thursday, Steve, that the union had a vote and the union did ratify the contract last week. And we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Question I have right now, Anthony, is for the grievance procedure. In the past, I know the council had been part of that. Is that something that's been removed or is it just kind of administrative through yourself?
So John, help me out here. I don't recall the grievance involving the council in the prior contract. Am I correct about that?
Yes, not in the prior contract, but in like personnel stuff. Is that something that we, when we adopted a contract?
So the grievance procedure in this contract is no different than it was in the prior contract?
The same along with like the PD and?
Yes.
No, I think it's fine. It incorporates, I like fact, incorporates seniority and people that have established themselves at the service. I can obviously attest to the fact that we have a lot of dedicated EMS professionals in this town. And so I certainly would recommend approval. Yeah, I'm motion. I move to approve as presented the labor agreement between the town of Winthrop and IAFF Local 5176 with a term of July 2024 to June 30th, 2027.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Right. So and so Steve, I tell you what, call me tomorrow and we'll find a time where we can both execute the agreement. So and really appreciate the union's help with this. I mean, they were, they were great to work with throughout this. And I thought their demands cut a really nice balance between what was good for our ambulance service employees and what was good for the community and our taxpayers. So appreciate their collaboration partnership on that.
We'll move on to item 100, discussion of a special meeting date for consideration of the revised fiscal year 25 school budget.
So want to be clear, we're not here tonight to vote on the budget itself. We're, this discussion is really just to set a special meeting, which is what we heard from the council that how you wanted to address the school budget moving forward. Now, having said that, we have some school trustees here and we have the superintendent here and I'm sure they're happy to entertain any questions that you may have. But what we'd like to do is, and Jim and I were in agreement on this, we want this process to be as transparent as possible. And one of the ways that you can accomplish that is by ensuring that you have a public hearing in which folks can come and offer their opinions and ask questions and so forth. So with a public hearing, that requires a seven-day notice. So the earliest that we could meet in order to have this special meeting would be July, June 24th, a week from today. If you want to stick with the tradition of meeting on Mondays, then, then, you know, if not June 24th, then we could meet July 1st or July 8th. Now just be aware that whenever we do call a special meeting to address this, that assuming that the council does approve the school budget, at the same time, we'll also need to set the date for a special election. And we've been working both with the school system and their attorneys just to ensure we're meeting all the criteria that is required for not only a school validation election, but a special election.
I would urge all counselors to try and get this 24th date in. We've got to put this to bed.
Yeah.
Okay. That's correct. So Linda, if you have, if you have questions about why don't we, why don't we have the superintendent come up and?
Can the superintendent give us a rundown of the changes that were made?
So I'd like to, I'd like to start, go back a little bit further than that. Just this, just want to say, this has been a particularly rough budget year, really challenging for a number of reasons. But at the end of the day, the information that was provided to you was not crystal clear. And I know that was a concern for some people and I have to, I have to own that. So in putting together this, this last, even the last warrants, I realized that there were some numbers that were transposed. Anthony, I went through them. I went through them today and shared them with Anthony, went through them with him. So they're all very confident that what you, I think you got tonight is 100% accurate and 100% ready to go. So let me tell you how we arrived at this number based on where we were when the council rejected the budget last time. I met with the administrative team. We had considered a number of options before and they made some recommendations, which I took to the school board and they approved last week. There's a lot of feedback for this. So the process for arriving at this number was, I can explain pretty simply. But we'll tell you that if approved, this budget was already exceptionally tight. And I'm happy to talk more about that, but it's even more tight because what we did was, at one point, we talked about, we had added three positions at the middle school this year. The school board was really clear. First of all, I'm sorry, I wanted to excuse myself. I wanted to know, oh, we have more members here. That Chair Lawson is here and Ivy Corliss is here. She's a board member. And Catherine Emery is on Zoom. We also have the middle school principal who's here and the special ed director who's here as well. Miss anybody? No? Okay. So the board was really clear after the budget was defeated. They did not want to lose any of the teachers. In fact, there was some concern about concerns that we need additional positions that were not able to be put into the budget. So one of the things that was suggested was taking a look at the positions that were, where we had retirees or people leaving and see what the savings was from those positions and see where that would put us. So we basically had four people either retire or have left that were veterans going to a different position. And we looked at the difference between, because this, we couldn't do this before the budget was initially approved because we hadn't hired those people yet. Now that we've hired those people, we can actually do that. So out of Article 1, we cut $71,941. That's four teachers and the difference in what we paid them versus what we're paying their replacements. So 71,941 there. We also, the administrative assistant for special ed retired this year. There's a savings of $8,073 there. And there was $10,000 that Josh was able to find for us out of transportation. So altogether, that's $90,014. And when you, we subtracted that, that took the budget, the budget increased to 5.51. It took the overall impacts, the taxpayers to 3.78. Where's it? 4.98 before? Now it's 3.78. And the information that provided to you was reflective of, I'm sorry, it's actually 3.76 and it's 282,860. Those should be the numbers you have in front of you now. And that's because the amount that was raised for adult ed was 58,000 last year and was 58,000 again this year. And so I had showed it reflected in the first piece to you at 56 and 58, which was not accurate. A $2,000 difference makes up that, that difference. So that gets us to, like I said, a 3.7. Six, I think is the number. And that's, those are the cuts and that was approved by the board last week. Now it's coming back to you. The, I guess the thing I want to point out, I shared this before, but it's just update the numbers. The total increase to the budget, budget to budget before everything else was 702,788 before revenues, the revenue adjustments, just three lines, Articles 1 and Article 8 and Article 10 represent almost 680,000. So the rest of the budget is up $22,000. And the reason for that, I mean, the first one is up 150, Article 1 is up $151,000. That includes three teachers, three new teachers. It's way more than $150,000. And they negotiated agreements, which we just, the teachers just ratified today. And that will be, the board will act on it on Thursday, hopefully. And that's over $250,000. So those two numbers together equal more than the total increase we're asking for from the taxpayers.
Questions?
Correct. Well, I mean, they vary. The, some of the upper level courses have small numbers and I've asked OJ to take a look at them, eight or nine or 10. And some of the other mainstream courses are in the upper teens and close to 20. So it does vary depending on what the courses are that are being offered. Yeah, it's, we don't, we don't break them down that way, but that 34 is an anomaly. The class that's coming up is 74. So replacing 34 with 74. And there are no other, all of our other classes are, what I would say, the norm for us between 55 and 65. And the eighth grade class coming up is actually one of the biggest ones coming up. So about the same as it's always been.
What would be, because I know sample, when it's our freshman year, students graduating, I'll see attrition.
Wow. It's not that long. It's not that high, I should say. Yeah. Yeah, we're, we obviously still lose it and it's even more of a challenge now, but we're still not losing that many. With the charter schools, we lose some to the, I can't think of the name, but the one that's in Augusta, the Arts Academy. Obviously, we still lose some to Kentshill. But we're still, one of the things that I guess I've never shared is we are still almost double the number of people who come to Winthrop on superintendent's agreements as opposed to those who choose to leave. So it's, it's, you know, it's one of the things I was charged to do when I first came here to sort of figure out why people were choosing to go somewhere else. And, you know, and that's been, there are various reasons for it. And of course, there are some that are just not happy and they think going somewhere else will be, will be better for them. And you can't do a lot about that.
The comparable class size you mentioned a minute ago, I mean, the class size per classroom or teacher?
Yep.
How does that compare to other, other communities, other schools?
I don't know that I've done that. I can tell you, I've been in my 11th or 12th different school system and we maybe are slightly lower, maybe slightly lower. But I can tell you, I mean, Lori's here and you can ask her if you want. But the middle school, which is why we wanted three teachers, the middle school has class sizes in the mid to upper twenties, which is, we have a policy on the cap set and we actually are over that in some of our classes at the middle school. Mills, we looked at it in particular. I sent the information to the school board to look at the number of students, student teacher ratio for kindergarten through grade. I did it through grade eight because that's what you can do. It's harder to do it for the high school. And the grade school is pretty good, 15, 16, you know, in that neighborhood. But that's, and I would say that's pretty comparable to places that I'm aware of around us.
Any other questions?
Special ed, how much is that in a least?
Special ed is up less than 1%. And we are still 0.98, right? Yeah. We are still the lowest of the, the number of identified students for our population in the, in the region. And Sue is here. Yep. She's nodding ahead. Yes. So we still are doing quite well. We're like 13 and a half percent identification rate. And now the places, the state average is somewhere around 17, 18, 19. Yeah. So we're quite a bit below.
I need a motion to call a special meeting date of 6. Make a motion to call a special meeting on 6th and 4th, 2021.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I appreciate the other board members being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 101, discussion on the main dot sidewalk grant application process.
So I may have shared this with you before, but one of my first impressions of Winthrop is we were really fortunate to have a strong network of sidewalks in our downtown area. The downside of that was that since their installation, they haven't been well-maintained, if maintained at all. And so last fall, shortly after our town planner, Dawn Emerson, joined our staff, she and I met with the manager for the DOT's bicycle and pedestrian funding program to see how we, because we were aware that they have an annual grant program and we wanted to see how we could plug into that in order to improve our sidewalks. And so that app, they have an annual application process. That application is due on July the 15th. And Dawn and executive assistant Deb Nichols and I are working on that application. Part of the application process is that we engage in public discussions about the sidewalks. And so that's part of what we're doing here tonight. The village revitalization committee will also be discussing sidewalks when it meets on June the 27th. So what we're looking at doing is improving sidewalks along Main Street at the DOT's suggestion because it does border a state road from Metcalf Road down to Route 133. And essentially, it would be a complete reconstruction of many of those sidewalks, except for the cement portion that we have just right there in the heart of the village.
Is now, and I know this goes back a ways before your time, Linda might have to help, but is Main Street actually maintained by Winthrop? Or is that from Zen?
No. Yeah, the sidewalks, but the roadway itself is a DOT roadway.
202, that's where that comes from.
Yeah, the only maintenance that we would provide is plowing during the, during the winter time. So, so anyway, so what we're looking at doing, well, we want to accomplish two things generally. We want to ensure that there's a safe, smooth surface for people to walk on, on the sidewalks. And we want to ensure that we're compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act because our sidewalks are not wide enough to be ADA compliant. And so what the DOT has suggested is a sort of a two-phase process. The first would be a design and engineering of our sidewalks. And along with that, they would have to acquire the easements on property owners' property in order to widen the sidewalks to 60 inches. So that would happen first. And then this application would also serve as our application for the construction funding. And they said that typically, whenever they go ahead and pursue the grant funding for the design process, that is an that is an indication that they're planning on following through with the, with the construction. So that there is a 20% match on this. We're still calculating what the cost would be, but but I see this as a first step to improving sidewalks downtown. And it just makes sense to start, start with Main Street.
Yeah. And this has been a big discussion for quite some time. The sidewalks have been brought up on multiple occasions.
Yeah. I mean, eventually what we'd like to do is get to us, you know, where we redo all the sidewalks, but also to have better connections between, say, like Main Street and Norcross Point and the Town Beach and the library. Just some of those places that, that people access on a regular basis. And, and, you know, this is, maybe I'm making a prediction that I shouldn't, but I would think that ours would be a really attractive project for the DOT, simply because think about the amenities that people access downtown. The grade school, the town office, the post office, banks, the police station, Hannaford's. You know, it's the Historical Society, the library. I mean, it's, it's a pretty long ranging list. And so I would think that ours would have a really good shot of, of winning DOT approval.
Yes, sir.
So I know we have at least a couple of members of the Downtown Revitalization Committee here and, and absolutely.
I appreciate that. I think it's great. I would like to see, I know that's not part of this grant, but you can't walk on Greenwood Avenue sidewalk anymore. We, everybody who walks, they walk in all the sidewalks and that one, it's just not passable. So I think we should make a priority list of how we're going beyond that, because I think the sidewalks downtown are passable. There are some that aren't. So I, though I appreciate this, I think there's others that could benefit.
And I, I don't disagree with you at all, Pat. And, and part of this is, you know, you, you take the King's Shilling, you do the King's bidding. And so, and so in this case, the DOT is the king and, and they, and their preference is that we develop sidewalks alongside their roadways. So, but but I think once we get the ball rolling on this, I think it very well could and should lead to improving other sidewalks. And frankly, you know, maybe one of the ways that we approach that is we make this part of our, our annual paving project as well.
Any other discussion?
You know, Andy, that's an interesting question. I'll have to check with Allstate, our paver, to see if they do, if they do sidewalks. So and part of the process too, is also ensuring that you have good curbing to go along with it, because a lot of our curbing is bituminous curbing asphalt. And so that does not typically weather snow plowing as well as concrete and granite. Granite's of course very expensive, but, but it's, it's there for the ages.
So the grant application has been filled out and is with the appropriate department or?
So we're working, we're still working on the grant application. I think we've, if I had to guess, I would say we're more than halfway done with, with the application. But as a, as you see in your packet, it's a pretty involved application. So so that's why, that's why three of us have decided to divide and conquer on that application.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll move on to item 102, presentation of the 2023 accomplishments of the Winthrop Historical Society. Thank you for attending.
Good evening. I'm Linda Pratt and I'm here to represent the Winthrop Historical Society. 2023 continued to be a productive year for the Winthrop Main Historical Society. A lot of the year's accomplishments were in the direction of artifacts and organizing them with a few building maintenance items. Heat pumps were put in the first floor of the building for heat and air conditioning with the help of Efficiency Main. An egress door was installed in the downstairs for safety issues and is wide enough to bring larger artifacts into the building. Front doorsteps were replaced with new granite steps and railings. We now have the custodialship of the town of Winthrop's historical records are in the process of cataloging them as well as storing them in proper artifacts containers for preserving with the yearly financial help from the town for the project. Purchased an updated version of QuickBooks for cataloging. We have purchased by donation the church bell from the Quaker Church in East Winthrop when they closed. We have required, have acquired many artifacts about Dennis Clark, who has recently passed away. Dennis played basketball from grade schools through high school in Winthrop, went on to play all through college, was in the New England Hall of Fame, and later invited to try out for a professional team. Dennis has left a legacy for the town of Winthrop. We are now a member of the Lakes Region Chamber of Commerce, a member of the Kennebec Historical Society, a member of the Kennebec County Chamber. Our memberships continues to be strong and thanks to the continued membership dues, donations, gift shop and fundraisers through the year, we have for another year been able to maintain the operations of the Winthrop Historical Society. Also, a lot of the maintenance and care, the building is done by volunteers inside and out. Since we opened in 2021, our winter plowing and sanding have been done by two volunteers at no expense to the society. We continue to have monthly events for the public to enjoy, such as our monthly speaker nights. The Board of Directors of the Winthrop Historical Society would like to thank the Winthrop Town Council for their continued support of the Winthrop Historical Society. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Any comments? Move on to item 103, to determine the interest rate that shall be applied to overpayment of abated taxes recommended.
So you may recall at the last meeting, we set an interest rate for overpayment of taxes. Town clerk recently went to some training in which she learned that we also need to set a rate for the overpayment of abated taxes. So these are
Very much, folks.
So these are taxes that, where there's some dispute over the assessment and, and the assessor decides to, to lower the value, which then lowers the rate. And then you get a bit of a refund, if you will. So under state law, if the council does not set an interest rate, it defaults to the same rate as we set for delinquent taxes, which is eight and a half percent. If the council does set a rate for the repayment of abated taxes, the rate may not exceed four percentage points less than what the rate is for the, for delinquent taxes, which is 4.5%. So we're recommending that the council adopt an interest rate for overpayment of taxes caused by abatement at 4.5%.
Second.
All, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number 104, consideration of disbursement warrants.
I am.
So yes, I guess I'll move to do prove the disbursement warrants as presented.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item number 105, consideration of recommendations from the Appointments Committee.
I don't have any appointments at this time.
The motion? Okay, so nothing there. Other business, public comment? Anything from the web?
There doesn't appear to be anyone on the, on Zoom who's wanting to speak.
On to the town manager's report.
All right. So, you know, we're whipping through this so quickly. I'm, uh, I'm tempted not to even have a report so we can just adjourn.
It's really, still got some fishing done.
Good point, Roy. Sort of, okay. But a few, a few highlights here is, you know, I've been emailing you folks about the paving projects. And so we actually have a a time coordinated with the town of Monmouth to a Wilson Pond Road that will happen on the week of July 9th with the other roads that we have along with Soper Road. And so, well, and, and this is one of the benefits of partnering with them on this road is they have the, the longest stretch of the road. And because of the length of that road, it's going to reduce our asphalt cost, because the longer the road, the, the, the cheaper the price. So that's going to be a great change. So that's going to, that's, that's going to occur. So we've got everything scheduled for the summer with the exception of Rambler Road, which we know is going to be done in August, when they're paving up at the middle school parking lot. I just passed around and I sent to you guys last week, this email that I received from the Cabessy Lake Association, wondering if the town might have any interest in owning the, the lighthouse and the island on Cabessy. Well, here's, here's my concern is not necessarily the, the cost of the acquisition, but it would be the cost of the maintenance of that. And with permission to speak frankly, I, I'm not, I'm failing to see any benefit to the town of our taking that on.
Ability.
And liability.
On top of the things, thank you, Anthony. Whole top of the thing now is stainless steel. Notwithstanding all that, there's still ongoing maintenance and there's still liability. And I feel that we really shouldn't go near it. Okay. I, I really do. I think one of the issues here may be that, and Bill Keel Tika is a friend of mine, this is not a personal issue. But I think the yacht club is trying to avoid unnecessary or unneeded expenditures, you know, in their effort to plow into avoiding mill foil and vegetation. And they're looking at this, and if they can give this away, one less, one less burden upon them.
Is that light?
Oh, I, I think it probably stands. Well, yes, if you add the top and everything, it stands about 30 feet tall. The base is probably 10, 12 feet around. The top is probably eight feet around. It's all stainless steel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. I think it's almost 100. Is it over 100 years old now?
So you couldn't hear it now?
Yeah, it's built in 1904, according to this, so.
I actually think if you started to tear it down, you'd have environmental issues. There's no way that the, the land around it's so small that you'd end up in, you know, half of it would be in the lake.
See, it's land is around it.
Very little. The islands probably yeah, the islands probably nowadays, you know, before they raised the level of lake, it was quite large, but nowadays and, and taken into consideration erosion, it might be 12 or 14 foot, 15 foot wide and 30 feet long.
Yeah, I thought if anything would have, they should, I mean, if look, they're looking at something, I would have thought maybe land, they have a lot of property on the lake as is already. And they may be something that would be worth communicating with doing it that way.
Maybe we could. You ever been in it and see all the bird do in there? You wouldn't want to be at bed and breakfast, I can tell you.
Definitely not. I mean, it does function as a, as a warning to boaters, but.
Except for the one time at midnight with the fog and I had to take the warden out on a rescue.
Oh yeah, there's been a few.
And the lighthouse was out. We just, outside the lighthouse, one lighthouse, the light out.
Okay, I'll, I'll let, I'll let the Cabessy Lake Association know. So just again, I updated you folks last week, but we went to court regarding five Winthrop Center Road. I think the, the threat of that convinced the, the property, or I shouldn't say the property owner, because we're the property owner at this point, but the resident there to, to pay the back taxes. And so we've got a pretty ironclad agreement in place. And if there should be any default even by a day, then, then we hold the hammer to.
It's the red button as you start up the road, right?
That's correct.
It started, it started to look like they cleaned it up.
So today we engaged in some active shooter training with our police department. I have to say, it was excellent. The, it was so professional and so well presented and all. And I mentioned to Chief Ferland that I think there's real benefit of offering that to the community. So I'm going to work with him. And at some point we'll offer up this room and invite members of the community to come and, and engage in that, because I think it would be really helpful. Everyone on our staff found it to be really helpful and productive. Just a reminder, Wednesday is Juneteenth. That is a state and federal holiday, so our offices will be closed. We have the concerts at Norcross Point starting on July the 7th, and we're going to start publicizing that, but that'll be weekly through, I think like about mid-August or so. Our, you may recall our digital mapping RFP that we issued, so responses to that are due by 3:00 PM tomorrow. I'm aware that we've received at least two of those thus far. And, and we're expecting to receive at least one more. And frankly, that's kind of a surprise. I figured there'd probably be only one company interested in that. But, but that's gratifying to see that many people bidding on, on that particular project. Andy mentioned, noticed that we got the wiring done for the new AV system, which seems to be performing a lot better tonight than it did during its maiden voyage. And, and so later this month, we're going to have the same guy who did the painting in some of our offices last year come in, patch this wall behind it and paint it Winthrop green. So that'll help it sort of stand out a little bit more. So I'm making progress there. As of today, I emailed you guys about this late in the day, but our web address is now winthropmain.gov. That transition has been made. Now, having said that, if you type in winthropmain.org, it's going to redirect you to winthropmain.gov. But that's going to be helpful in two regards. One, the .gov domain is a safer, more secure domain. And then secondly, it, it helps people know sort of who we are and what we do. It designates us as, you know, a government entity. So, so that's going to be good.
How long will that .org be redirecting over to that? Is that?
It, it, it can do it forever. So we still, we still own that domain name. So.
All of us are going to have to watch our shirt. That's neutral back there now. Are going to have to wear a shirt and blouse clothes, make sure they, that's over the green. How does the pink do anyways?
Oh, pink will be fine. Yeah. Yeah, you'll look lovely. So, and then lastly, I received the ballot today for the Legislative Policy Committee. So I don't think that they received your application. Your name was not on the ballot. Or broadcasting one. So anyway, but, but my, but my name is on there. I did submit an, an application. And so, so you guys need to vote on that. So we will bring that to the next council meeting, which raises, actually, this is the last point is, we talked about meeting once in July. And so when would you like to meet in July and August? I might suggest doing it at, on the middle Monday of each month. So that'd be July 15th and August 12.
I don't.
Second.
I do recall that we talked about that. I don't recall that we agreed to do that. And I don't agree with taking, cutting the meetings back for July and August. I think we should continue to meet twice a month, just as we have.
I'm on the second.
Well, the thing is, 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 is people in July.
You know, two. Times in July. No, I mean, it's, it to me, if you don't really need to meet that.
If we, when this all started, I actually think I was the one that started it, um. We weren't supposed to vote on the second meeting, it was just a workshop. And if we keep the July, August meeting, the second meeting as a workshop, and if there's only four or five of us. You know, because other people are gone, it's not the end of the world, I mean, we can all sit down, talk things over and come up with ideas. I I don't disagree with you, but. We we make those choices, if we know the council meetings are on the first and third Mondays. Uh, you know, I mean, I do my best to hold all my Mondays as long, and I ask that. We schedule our council meetings, even our extra ones on Mondays, and when you ran for election and.
You know, we hit a fish. Those weren't, we're always once a month, it's up, it's up to you guys, but I don't, I finish.
I'm okay with once.
I mean, I don't think you need to need send job.
It's not like we have a list of, this, this meeting was quite light. If we have a little, a little heavier meeting once in July and August, I don't think it's gonna hurt any.
It's just me.
You could look at it the other way, if we have two meetings and some of us are missing as long as they. Two meetings, it's much more likely that. Because the second meeting will catch the other.
How about, or maybe we have enough, I mean, you'll be gone, we'll look people on, I mean, you know. This is a busy season. But we do have a lot of business on our side and not more than when I started. I don't think there's an issue with one meeting in August, you know, is that what we're talking about in July?
So let's set the dates then, so so that we can get this on account. So it'd be the first Mondays, so it'd be, so that would be July the first and then. August the fifth, alright, done and done. Oh, we will. And that's all I have for this evening.
I have a question. Go ahead. Question, I should say, comment, I saw that the town Monmouth posted today. That they did get awarded their uh, community action grant for the state main to complete their engineering study. And the amount of their grant was forty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars of fifty-six cents, so that just further. Should illustrate that we did make the correct decision. Letting them separately, we both had applied, but if towards that, then we would have lost out on a significant portion of money. Since they did not even. Study, so it's gonna, uh, there. That we obviously still going to work with them, when they come up, whatever that's. Can I just mention that the uh, height of the dam is down well below where we started. Couple months ago.
Little Borel.
I don't think there's a need to at the moment.
So, so is it coming over the spillway still or really, oh, interesting.
It's down. Well, it's amazing what happens when you remove the brush out of the mouth of the dam, right, Anthony?
You were right, counselor, you were right. He reminds me every third time that I see him.
Anything else, Anthony?
No, sure.
Like the, somebody suggest a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Seven or six.
Second.